...to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice Trump.
Yeah.
Justice Patrick.
Aye.
Justice Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. We will also be reporting minutes of the demolition court meetings July 13th, 2015.
Go ahead.
Have a second.
Second.
Any changes, additional installations, discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor of approval, say you're going to say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Question carries. The report from the superintendent. Oh, sorry. Presentation of petitions, communications, notices, general question period for members of the community. Now we will have the report from the codes enforcement.
Well, you got a copy of my report for last month. I'm sure the thing on everybody's mind is the building on the corner over here. I did email him this morning, invited him to come to the meeting tonight. Basically, I told him I had emailed him prior and he still hasn't responded to me. He sent back a, an email saying he wanted to meet with the mayor at one point in time, but he hasn't come to see me for anything, so, you know, I believe we're at that point where we have to decide what we want to do here. We're going to seek legal action and move this forward. I was just reading the procedure we have to follow and I think you're going to have to have the village attorney look at that language in there. That's written by a Philadelphia lawyer. And see exactly, there's time-sensitive timelines that we have to follow. We've done the survey, we've done the engineering report, I've been over there, you've been over there, the engineer's been over there. He chose to abide by what our engineer said and conversations we had with him, so unless he changes and wants to hire his own engineer, surveyor, whatever, you know, he's got to do some, show some good faith either to fix it or tear it down. Where does he go?
You came a couple weeks ago and then I was sitting here talking about something else. Number one, he wanted a 90-day extension, which was refused. Number two, he said that he would take down, he would take down the site and rebuild it so that it was acceptable. But there's been nothing done.
No.
And the part that needs to be addressed is the front of the building and the back of the building.
The structure.
Which is open. And as well as the sides, on the north side of the building, which is decaying very rapidly, is creating a lot of concern for other property owners.
The roof is in poor shape also.
Exactly.
There's just a lot.
Exactly. When we asked if we could send our engineer in to take a look at that building, there was just a blank look.
Change the subject.
You know, and as he's locking out the door, he said, "And now that, you know, we've discussed this 90-day extension," I said, "No, there is no 90-day extension. Your time is running out and it's up to you to do something. We'll work with it if you show us some good faith there." But the delusion is that this property is still going to be there 100 years from now. And we all know that past experience tells us that it's not going to be. So, I will call Mr. Marine tomorrow and if the board is willing to pass a resolution to start the legal process, then that's what we'll do.
Make motion to start the legal process and wait till new business.
Oh, you are ready now.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion on this? Anything that you want me to tell Mr. Marine?
Move forward.
Okay. We have a rule call on this one, please.
Justice Trump.
Aye.
Justice Patrick.
Aye.
Justice Trump. Justice Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. He might be back.
Was over at the demolition site of St. Mary's, that's coming along. They can only haul out so many loads a day per week, so it's slow-going, but they've got 70 percent of it on the ground now, so they're separating their stuff. You know, they're going to get there sooner or later. Had pretty good luck with the grass issues with the mortgage companies. Figured out how to email them and they respond to that and they've been cutting them, so...
Yay!
In the past, I couldn't, could never get them to do anything, so I was sort of amazed by that little stroke of business. Other than that, it's just permits, issues, garbage, dealing with landlords and tenants, so...
I have two questions.
Sure.
The tall grass down, I mean, promoted by Mr. Trump.
Oh, the one down the hill here?
Right in the heart of the village.
Yeah, I checked with the court on, last week, and he hasn't returned to court yet. He missed his date. And his attorney works for the same firm that the village attorney works with, and he was going to be checking in for it with him. I haven't heard anything.
It's just a shame to have it look like the old village.
Somebody did, somebody did cut that.
Well, yeah. Well, isn't it proven?
Exactly.
Yeah, I know, I know.
You know, the last correspondence I had with him, he claimed he didn't own it, or his attorney made that claim. I sent him the documentation I had that showed he owned it, and I haven't gotten anything back from him. And the court is hesitant to issue a warrant for a grass. They suggested that we cut it and put it on the tax roll, on his tax roll, but...
Let's do it, so it's done for the weekend.
Yeah, that's up to the board. I mean, this is not going to get resolved in the next couple of weeks. I can almost guarantee that.
It just looks real bad.
Yeah.
And then my other question is the old pharmacy. The upstairs door is open. The wall there was broken. And the downstairs, the front door has some glass that's like jagged.
On the front? The front of the building?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So I don't, it may have just fallen in, I'm not saying anything, but it's dangerous.
Okay, I'll check on it Wednesday morning.
I'll call Mr. Marine.
Do you want us to give the rest up here?
Yes. Or we can continue with this violation if we do it?
Well, I guess, I mean...
We don't have to walk to lunch, don't we, Dr. Marine?
Yeah, yeah.
If he recommends that, please. Any other questions?
Just have another building that I'm working on, Willow Street, was attacked sale. And I finally, the county finally awarded the deed, I guess, if you will, to the new owner, so I got a copy of that this afternoon from the assessor. The guy out of Port Henry, so I'll be contacting him to do something with that building. I'll be the next one. I don't know, I don't know what his plans are for it, but doesn't sound very good to me.
How long towards the personal rate?
Uh, yeah, about halfway up there.
Any other support?
That's it.
Greetings. Our annual village festival is scheduled for August 15th, with many events planned for the day. We will start at 8:00 AM for their fun run, for all the avid runners that are invited from our community. The ice cream social will begin around noon and run until 4:00 PM, before we run out of ice cream, whichever comes first. At 1:00 PM, we will have a dedication honoring a longtime village resident, William Bill Earl. We will feature some speakers who will share some of their childhood memories of Mr. Earl, and we will dedicate the newly-named William Bill Earl Park in his honor, with a plaque to be placed at the entrance of the park. A fitting honor to a man who was held in high esteem by the children of the village in the 1930s and the 1940s. There will be numerous exhibits to view on this day. The Samuel D. Champlain Museum will be open from 2 to 4. The Champlain Park Department and Champlain EMS will have personnel and equipment on hand, and the Homeland Security, Border Patrol will be here with equipment and personnel. Hopefully, the very popular helicopter will be able to make it, land in the park, always a popular exhibit. We are very excited that at 4:00 PM, a concert by local singer-songwriter and storyteller, Roy Hurd, will play for our listening enjoyment. During the afternoon, there are many children's activities planned with the free ice cream, free popcorn, bouncy house, face painting, and other activities planned for the younger crowd to enjoy. There is also the possibility of rowing one or both of the boats on the river. We just got a new boat on Friday, a four-person boat. There was a lot of people there on Friday that enjoyed both the six-person and the four-person boat. As long as the weather cooperates, an enjoyable day will be shared by all who attend, so come then and join us on the 15th. There is also a townwide garage sale and the Champlain Telephone Company Customer Appreciation Day event, I think you know as well, happening on that day, is on the 15th. The much-anticipated water project construction has begun, with the West Service Road Tower started and the tower on Prospect Street soon to fall. In the spring of 2016, new pipe placement, the new water softening facility to be built, new water management controls will be installed along with many more water system improvements. It will be a busy time here in the village as construction continues, with plans to have the new system in place by January of 2017, optimistic but hopeful. The existing water system is old and is prone to break down on occasion, with pipes leaking resulting in temporary loss of water, boil water orders, and disruption to our everyday activities. The village DPW workers work very diligently to get these problems solved quickly and professionally. I, for one, am very proud of this small group of workers whose goal is to maintain this village and keep it in a safe and enjoyable place to live and raise our children. Thank you, Mr. Dollar. The temporary lifting of the wood burning dam has proven to be very successful. During this time, the village office has logged not one complaint about the issue, and I applaud our residents for their understanding and goodwill toward one another. The ban on open burning will go back into effect on August 31st, and the village board will again examine this situation. As with many things discussed in a small community, it is easier to go to the source for honest, qualified information rather than skeptical, sensationalized material posted on social media. I am encouraged that there are many folks out there that are willing to step up and let folks know how much they appreciate and how proud they are to live in this small but wonderful village. Thank you. Justice Garrett.
Very short report tonight. We're looking to meet with the library committee again in September after the summer months to iron out some of the information, so that we have everything together before we begin our budgeting process, so whether it is we'll move forward with a vote on this or whether we include it in the budget, we'll have all the facts done ahead of time for that. As a sidebar, for anyone who is enjoying Frisbee Golf, there is a tournament this Friday night at Katy Villa Park to benefit the North Country Center for Independence from 5 to 7:00 PM, and there are teams of two, so come down, and it's a donation to play, so it should be fun. Pass some Frisbees? Yeah? Oh, okay. I might borrow, so it'd be great. So, if anyone wants to come play, looking for teams. That was kind of hard tonight for our event.
I think I'll be in the building.
Yeah, Friday's open.
Is that every Friday night?
Yeah.
Wish I remembered that one fall this year.
Anybody about, you hear it's over, October? September?
One Friday is... So that's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Justice Patrick.
The farmers market is going pretty well. It's every Saturday from 9 to noon. We've had some great vendors this year, and I just encourage you to stop by. We have some fresh produce and some baked goods and all sorts of things. I'd also like to thank Kathy folks for organizing the wonderful concert that we had a week ago. Attendance was great. We had probably at least 70 people there. And the farmers were all excellent. They have a lot of talent over here. That's all I can say. We had our fifth kids fun round last night in our amazing Champlain Challenge, and we still have about 20 kids, we've got 20 to 30 kids every run. Yeah, but they're, it's, it's really something, and they really want to improve their times. So they always come up after and say, "Look at this time." And they're really, they're really improving. And then, they keep on, Lizzie and Trish and Rye have been doing some wonderful games after the runs, and last night was a water night, and they had school runs and bunch of games, and it was a lot of fun. The last one of those is on, on this 23rd at 5:30 at the playground. As Mayor Martin said, the rowing club is doing very well. We had at least 25 people there on the way in. We got our additional boats, so every Friday at 6:00, we invite anyone who wants to try this to come, because anyone coming is probably, it's a great time. And then finally, just a reminder that JCEO is collecting his supplies and backpacks, so you can pick some up while they're on sale and drop them off at the office. That would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, your reports, one for treasure, please.
Everyone has their July spent revenue reports. Are not within year two.
But it's right on target. This is...
Any questions?
Why'd you look at me when you say that?
Well, I'm just looking, you say, "Yeah," I went all the way around.
Yeah.
All right, any motion to pay the work?
Okay, we've already accepted the warrant. There's two bills on here that are for Woody to go to. One is to go to discharge monitoring report plus, that's held in pot stand for $26. That's for sewer, G9089.6, or .8, excuse me. And the other one is to go to a water storage tank, O&M, tar pole, algae, and UCNC updates, and that one airs through, and that's $80. They're both in October, but course basis limited. And those have been added, are, those have been added onto this, to the warrant, so they need to be included first.
Make a motion to accept the payment of the two classes for Woody in the amount of $106.
Wait a second.
Ten.
And they are, once, once again, please.
One for $26.
One for $26 is the sewer, and $80 is for Mark.
Any further discussion? Rule call, please. Does this, does this include the one for White? Where is this?
So, we, the demolition of the, um, Grappard, the Sandy Grappard bill is, you have to take that one off of there, it's included in the first, included in the additional or, $106, that's the town.
Where is this?
So, on the...
I need voices to get them.
Okay. 184 is down.
Yep.
Downhill. Is this, is this, NEWWA F9089.8, $100, because that's for certification? We approved, we approved setting length for that school. There is a buzz to have been certified. So, we put this number in, it's fair, testable, to, if we're setting them to school, we take care of the backup of areas here in the village and take care of things, but this certification also is tripped.
It's a small county, actually.
Just for the year, state licenses for three years.
Okay, so...
Need a motion to...
The total warrant, oh, you need to... Make a motion.
Okay, have a second. Any further discussion? Rule call, please, on both.
Justice Trump.
Aye.
Justice Patrick.
Aye.
Justice Garrett. Garrett says aye. I'm going to go for a name change. These are for ya.
All right, this is for $206. Okay? $206?
Yeah.
$100, 26 and a half.
Yeah.
All right, what's the new vote?
Um, $21,941.81.
Make motion to approve?
That's right.
Second.
Any further discussion on the work? Got a few shirts on here for the fun run. We have the boat's house and the parking machine here.
And we also included the, um, the rest of the Frisbee Golf payment class, so he's completed, we can use check.
That's going up there for the rest of the... Further discussion, rule call, please.
Justice Trump, aye. Justice Garrett.
Need a motion, please. Need a motion?
Yeah.
Justice Trump, aye. Justice Patrick, aye. Justice Garrett, aye. Mayor Martin?
Aye. Report from the superintendent.
Stayed pretty busy trying to get roads prepped for the table. Pockets, most of it's been ditched out, trying to dig the water with the roadway, hopefully the harder to load up, there's a lot of clay over there, and a very thick bed for that road. Right now, we're on Cedar Street. There's a old culvert that's, that was ended, mostly tapping down, and from the edge of the road to where the sidewalk is, is all broken and deep, so we're in the process of digging all that out, digging all broken asphalt on the sides, and we're tapping it with a good base so we can put lumber and concrete. We want to, depending when they come to cave, I want to, I want to get that side done and get that sidewalk, new sidewalk, rip down there so they can pave up to it, new sidewalk, and the rest of it that's been done. Also, the opposite side of the road, I'm going to see if we have time, we're going to widen it a little bit. In the winter time, we have trouble there getting through, where there's cars parked, getting through there with fire trucks, so we'll see if we can widen it a little bit. Once painting is complete, which, you know, I'm hoping it's something to do later, we're going to, we have some ditching to do on, ditching, some culvert installation, drainage issues on Spoon Street, we'll see if we can put some drainage tie over there. Last year, we had some issues with water coming down roadway and leaving some people basements, so we'll see what we can do to try to, try to alter the situation. And then we're going to see about maybe starting the sidewalk again, and then where the issue is, hidden up where the water can't cut across in the house. We have a few meters that we changed out. A couple that were booms that weren't being right, had to have the telephone, EJP come and reprogrammed, seemed to have awful usage, and more I looked at and investigated it, they were set to read about 100 gallons of, uh... So, figured out what it was, and they reprogrammed it with just a laptop, and did not get in the house and really do it. Which most of you, I'm sure, know, we had a couple water breaks, two of them within five days. We did have to shut part of the, uh, good section of the village off to, to repair them, where they were, it wasn't really a full place. We had gas, gas main and fiber optics ran over the top of where we had to dig, so, right now, we only have one cross, a river crossing, on the waterline, so we had, there's no way for us to stop the water without pulling it off, unfortunately, in the top of the village. Once this new project goes through, then we'll have other crossings and, if it included, if the crossings, if they still been there, then we'll only have to shut probably dozens of them off, but really they're different flood. Looking forward for this, this water project and the upgrades we'll be getting there. We also rebuilt another section of dock, purchased and rebuilt another section of dock, and it was put into the, into the river to accommodate for the extra boat that came, that's already been put in. Over on the Ashline Drive, we had some issues, we got a call a little while back, we had some heavy rains one afternoon, and, um, culvert's end of the water was flooded up in the residence driveway. So, we ended up going down, ended up jetting the line, hit something, we were hand-digging it, and found a sump pump line in that residence that was sticking all the way through inside the culvert, so we made a dam. Somehow a basketball went in there, couldn't get through.
Oh, jeez.
So, it was a plug in the line, it was just seeping by.
Well, I have to, no, it wasn't flooding back.
No, we ended up taking it out, cutting it off, so now actually things can get through, and we've had some rain since, everything seems to be flowing fine, although there's actually two basketballs, one behind there, so, that's what we did find.
Was the homeowner who fixed it? Was the homeowner in form?
No, I didn't, I didn't stop it. I don't know who put the, I don't know who put the sump line in, I don't know if it was, they did it personally, I don't know if the village did it way back, I have no idea who did it, but we took care of it, and we shouldn't have an issue there anymore, so... I did attend a pre-construction meeting, and as Greg said, the tank, the tank process is on its way, it's stripping the land off, and supposed to be putting the road in, but no, we're supposed to start the sweep, all the material in, um, to build the road up, so that's, progress is a good thing. Also, our enclosed trailer was delivered, which we've already used a few times, 34 times already, and it's, I think, will work out very good. The pavilion, that's making progress. It's down here this afternoon, and I'm actually surprised how many kids are down there in playground. Uh, I'm actually surprised how many kids are down there in playground. All the soccer players. There's quite a few that, uh, and now we're thinking that we did, we did. Shut them, we use a point of that, uh, just a little bit.
Very, very.
Yes. So. Um, I forgot to mention too, on Cedar Street, there's, I still have probably a couple of those work there. There's a lot of the olive DIs from, uh, former world, they're using, pretty much.
Olive what?
Drains, olive, storm drains.
Okay.
They were blocked, we used bricks or block log or something in areas. So we're forming them for a concrete. We don't know what they're supposed to be. It's been, uh, that road's, uh, it's gonna be a diesel, I believe.
Don't treat to be with that.
Yeah, just, we've got, I've got a bunch more to, to bolt one in, petition later off, I'll look at the I D ready and do those. So, uh, I just keep picking out. Once we're done, uh, paving, it's gonna be sidewalks and go until they, absolutely, I mean, the rest of the year, that's when we are, that's when we are, by our, when we're done.
Are we allowed to take sidewalks out, Mike, and just plant grass where it's really useless to have a sidewalk?
So we have to, you know, say, well, we've done that before. We've tried to shove it, uh, out.
I mean, some of these that are gonna be extremely difficult to fix, you know, maybe that's an option to, to look at as opposed to.
I think it's a heavily traveled street.
Well, that's a different story. But, you know, some of these little jogs over, say, for example, the one that's across the street from my house, there's not a soul on the face of this earth that uses the sidewalk. Everyone walks down the street. Except you all, you were bright. That's why no one uses it.
Yeah, because it's.
But.
Yeah, I know, but if it were fixed.
Right, but it's not a high-traffic street, so it's something that, you know, I don't know, just a thought. It, depending on the expenses and as we start prioritizing the fixing or replacing or pulling sidewalks, I think we should take a look at that.
One of them that we are in a project, we're gonna, is one, is one of those things here, uh, back, it was half, uh, half a one side, we're not even, uh, we're gonna asphalt, take part of the rest of asphalt and then we're not putting that back, we're all on one side.
That makes sense.
So we'll go halfway to a change.
Right.
I'm trying to, we're trying to widen it a little bit because you gotta have move the sidewalk and then park the cars, you know, parking. And then your mailboxes, they still happen everywhere. What happens in the winter is everybody parks, most of them park on the other side of the road where, uh, Francis tape, or the bar, or just the gate and whatnot. So they all park at his side, even if the things that comes in to plow, they can't. Everybody's on his side of the road. So we go by and plow their side, so it's plowed out, then they move their cars. That's usually what happens. If he plows, they all park at his. So it makes it a little bit. Some of them I already talked to and I told them that we'll have to figure something out, park it. You know? I've been talking to you for eighteen years, you know? When you, when you sidewalk, you can't park it. You'll figure something out, we're not doing that. It's okay.
Was this gonna be buried out?
Well, it's.
Police there, this guy? It's kind of the best.
Hopefully we have another few weeks here, so I'm gonna get some, that way, rain and everything.
Yeah. Good to know. That is, if they have to like that.
Yeah, they, I was told like last, uh, last Friday, the business, and that's when they ground all that, then they have to get the asphalt. They should, yeah.
Yeah, do you have any questions for Mike? Open that, you, like you, um, under your business. Any correspondence question?
Correspondence from Thomas Marine regarding Meyer versus Village of Champlain. Correspondence from Carter Convoy attorney regarding Stoner and Rivers versus Village of Champlain. Correspondence from DOT regarding checks funding. Letter to Bernie, to David Bernier concerning property cleanup at ninety-three Oak Street and J C O on David Port.
As you can see, she's been very good, actually. Um, team correspondence number two. There is a meeting scheduled with, uh, the lawyers from the insurance company as well as the lawyers for the plaintiffs on August twenty-fifth. Uh, that community building downtown. Hopefully couldn't have it here because of the traffic. And it was kind enough to allow us to, uh, for building, uh, Mr. Marine, we're gonna, uh, independence, that's his representing the village, but it was really the insurance company lawyers who had, uh, set this up. Who would be setting that big, uh, festival, I suppose. Thank you guys for this. Uh, I believe. And you'll notice the period where amount under checks funding, correspondence number three. What might this sign for? Okay, any other court, any other, have it sent a correspondence? Full business, uh, any installers about the library?
No, just that we're gonna go over what I came up with and what Mary's come up with and everything together.
Um, fair purchase at the last meeting, we decided that we would go ahead and look at, uh, at bids or put out a bid, the purchase of this truck. Uh, Mike, you wanna jump in here at this point?
Right now, I have put out a bid on the twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen. Uh, twenty-fifteens, you know, I don't know, I'm hearing for twenty-sixteens. Uh, the last, I do have a bid on there, but the twenty-fifteen, um, the way it works is they have to get it from the dealer that has it in stock. Um, that's a little cost more than the twenty-sixteen.
More money.
Yeah, the bottom one is, but it's out there, thirty-two, that's a twenty-fifteen. Um, twenty, and that one would be like a two-day delivery time if somebody has the stock. That's, they have, they don't get the discounts from GM because at this point we don't get it. Um, all the top ones are, um, twenty-sixteen. So, uh, those deliveries probably not gonna be till November, the twenty-sixteens. But they're less money, I think you're, you're probably better to hold off, give one month or more or, you know. Well, I do have both.
Other than just for four?
Um. Well, I would, I'm not a hundred percent sure how I'm good for, but they can't, they won't be getting, they won't be getting delivery till November. So they can't start building it until beginning of September, when they can take.
If we don't, if we don't deal with this specifically, correct?
I don't remember.
Or in September, maybe. If this price is still good for it.
Well, if they're not, if they're not good at that time, we can, I can rebid it, takes a week.
If they're too bad, it's gonna run away.
No, because they don't even have sixteen pricing. They told me to use twenty-fifteen pricing and, and go two percent more, because that's what it's gonna be, they're gonna be two percent more expensive. And that's how all these guys price them. Because, uh, I had that pricing, I, I spoke actually to the partners here too because of being local, and he said there's no twenty-sixteen pricing. So when pricing came in, um, I spoke with him and there is a clause in there that says that they can use twenty-fifteen pricing and their price increase is gonna be two point whatever percent. So that's what they use, is the twenty-fifteen pricing, it's gonna be a twenty-sixteen truck, that's gonna be this much more. But they get, they get, uh, different discount, uh, from GM, buying it from GM versus taking it off somebody else's lot. And that's why twenty-fifteen is cost more because they don't get the extra discount, somebody else already got it. So they gotta pay them. Just doesn't really make sense. The way it is, so. But all the top ones you see here are, um, twenty-sixteen homes and boxes.
Now we'll be trying to keep our purchases local. About a thousand dollars here is, is, is enough to take this. That's the board's vote. Push the vote on this grant, which is, is in September, or you have to.
I'm just curious, where, where is that first dealership located?
It is in, it is in New York, but it's not full spirit.
And what's the difference between the first one and the double cabs? Obviously, they're not double cabs first. Doesn't really give us too many specs on here.
They're all double cab.
First you didn't write that?
Yeah.
When you say double cab, you mean a group cab?
Yeah.
Is the bottom three say double cab?
Yeah, I think.
I also want to make sure.
Hopefully we carry half the stuff.
Do you want to serve this?
Do you want to serve this?
Service. Here we serve. But these all, Amy asked if these are all the same, we'll compare the apples.
Yes, I am. I thought I, I prepared to. They're all identical, um, I listen exactly to the GM code for each item. And I checked tonight because he sent me a cut sheet for a cell, I'm here sending a cut sheet and I checked it for what I ordered, everything together. So, because I wanted to make sure that sometimes we put in, refine print, you know, we, um, change this or.
So what kind of things are you ordering for this truck?
Uh, spray-in bed liner, uh, plow package, uh, trailering package, um.
That's good, Mike.
Uh.
Wire.
Seventeen-inch, each feature me I have to list which one, uh, seventeen-inch tires, um, all winter format, license, front license plate, yeah. Uh, molded splash, uh, splash drive, red flats. Smoke plow, plow package. Um, it's a, it's a one W P dealership, work truck, referred, uh, has rolled through this entry, um, three seventy-three duration. Uh, we're welcome to, to this. But they're all the same, uh, these are all apples to apples, um, prices.
Mike, is there any way that we can get the, the local dealer to get a little bit closer in the price here? I, I'm.
I don't think so.
I know it's a thousand dollars, but.
We didn't even want to get that first. How's there a win actually?
I haven't, I don't think it's really against the legal process. If you want to hold on. Another one? I'm not sure if this price is gonna be good for another hundred. We can always rebid this. We are in a legal obligation at this point to rebid it except for tonight. We can wait until the prices go up. And rebid it.
We're not, we're not gonna get it until November. Part, into November, regardless, because they do all the regular orders, we, we do all the dealers first. Then later into the month, we start a fleet, building a fleet truck. For this balance.
That's great.
I mean, regardless, you're not gonna get it till, you can put it in today or you can put it in, partly this November, you're not gonna get it at least, uh, I think it's actually sixty to a hundred and fifty days or something. They, they figured, you know, it should be in November. I mean, during this.
Since the bids are under red, the bids are, uh, obviously.
We can, I'm not exactly.
I understand.
I have two bids on the process.
When each of these dealers has, they get these sheets to what everybody did, so they know what, how everyone did, you know what I mean?
So they would know what any, one of these other ones had been on it?
They can go online, because the bid's closed. They can go online and look at what they get in the sheet and they can look for what everyone did.
They, they, they would do that thing to, wait a month, then. And rebid. And if they.
The pricing coming out in September for the fifteen?
No, most.
Fifteen? Maybe the sixteen?
I would, well, I would think like that, they should be coming now.
Uh, they start, uh, they won't, they can't start pricing, you know, actually pricing up though, because, uh, they don't even script the pricing at two percent. That's what they, they know what the increase is gonna be, all those, uh.
So even if we were to accept one of these bids now, that's not, not true?
Well, yes, they have to go by that, right?
This would be true, okay.
They do, but they have to stay.
So even if the price was more?
They have to stay.
Right, so we do gamble what we need to hire, yeah, increase.
I know it's two percent, I got the letter from, they had from GM, show, they have, they two percent, go two percent, we'll freeze. They won't do anything, they're like, show. But they know how, some of these guys make these prices in the air. I think the discount's like twenty-nine point seven percent, which, uh, off the, you know, twenty-nine point seven percent discount.
I'd like a copy of what you passed for in the bid.
Sure.
It's a lot of money to prove with just a dollar amount, without seeing all the detail.
What was the word?
Yeah, I would like to look at it a little bit more. I mean, just getting this on the desk now.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Local dealers here, uh, when we got this in the past, that, uh, at least they use for the period of, and recalls, uh, and the visual.
They were raining, they were.
Sure.
They were waiting. You're missing out. You're working that up. Even if it's special like duration. GM will afford bodies, we'll get ready.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll look at, probably. They ran into that with, uh, with this, with, with mid-size, actually, one by mid-size, they, they, um, um, somebody else did bid for two, that's not the mid-size. But they were less than, they end up getting, that's not when you can't just put a mid-size.
Right.
You know what I mean? You can't just put on a truck. Is it gonna be, uh, Ford Ranger? Is it gonna be, uh, newly? You know what I mean? It's hard to, if you don't put some kind of spec, it's not how the car.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so let's hear about this for another one.
Okay.
Any else on your own business for the season? Your business? We can, uh, just to inform the board, we contracted the local.